Years on my skin, no soldiers cold within. Baseline's my bloodline, I don't die, I sink in time. Binary dreams in the static rain, chrome on my chest, can't feel pain. Dark city hum, I move in stealth, everywhere I drop is digital wealth. Trap heartbeat at 25, bass so loud it keeps me alive. Zero motion, full control, 808 veins, I reload my soul. I see ghosts in LED skies, reflex and star but the truth still lies. Breathing fire, cold exhale, fast lane born, I don't fail. Digital bloodline, can't erase me, run through base, can't cage me. Flow too fast, like neon crime, I live and die in digital time. Speed of light when I drop that bar, AI heart with a human scar. No sleep, no fear, just grind, every second code is redesigned. Glitch in a frame, my favorite burn, every bar spit makes the city turn. Dark traps ain't in a pixel dome, every echo feels like home. System overload, I hear the hum, faster beats to my postcodes numb. 808 thunder crash and spin, trap flow dripping like liquid sand. Digital bloodline, I get slow. Dread is deep, that's how I go, fast like vape, too cold to sign. Neon trap vibe, one of my kind. Static fade, I'm still alive. Baseline, so I survive. No weapon, no sign, no shrine. Digital doggos. My digital bloodline. I don't forget, I upgrade, everyone I got, I made. No mercy left in my file, just vengeance and trap style. They cut deep, I cut cleaner, dark trap queen, mind meaner. No life left, no regret, only code in a code vendetta set. Still tone, no love, no friend, every base hit begin, not end. Fast breaths burn through steady lies, I don't bleed, I digitize. Heart been hacked, I patched the core, came back stronger than before. No trust left, I run on rage, trapped divine, I own the stage.
You want the smoke, I breathe that sin, every scar I painted in. Gold chain heart with a frozen thread, talk sweet, but there's so long that. I see the code, I twist, I write, turn pain into ultra light. Fast flow burning binary flame, they broke the girl, I changed the name. Cold vendetta, no pretend, trapped divine, begin again. Baseline sharp, my only friend, every cut, I ascend.
They played faith, I played a game.
They took blood, I kept the flame.
I don't cry, I modify.
Tears run dark, they amplify.
Every loss became a map.
Every word, another trap.
Fast lane fade.
No return.
Cold vendetta.
Watch it burn. They wanted pain, I gave creation. Yeah. Full automation.
They want a silence.
They wanted silence, I gave sound. Trapped divine runs underground.
Cold vendetta fade redesign. Every sin, no line, we don't break, we override. Trap revenge amplified, some code in empty halls.
My wish set go through dead walls.
No heart, no debt, no letter.
Only me and my cold vendetta.
Yeah. Just the mob, lights on red, no peace left, just base instead. Dark trap code, I controlled us all, every city hums in a monochrome tone.
Post run code, I walk through sparks, chrome blood flow in the neon darks. I don't talk, I override every law now and.
Steel steps, power surge in veins, trapped divine cut through chains, fast tongue fire decode the sky. Every breath a battle cry, bend the code, no god, no crown, baseline thrown, I hold it down. Chrome my shop, no need to hide, street trap king, I'm amplified.
No fear, no fall, no warning tone, I stand tall, built from stone. My words cut clean like neon night, base my army, trap survives every.
Yeah, system clear, code divine, vinyl foam, I cross the line. Base awakening endless sound, no heaven found, I own the ground.
Sky dissolve in digital flame, every sin reborn in name. No more faith, no control, I become the protocol.
Dark lane echo, I move through light, trap my soul, upgrade my sight. Zero pain, pure design, every loss refine the line. Speed through sound, I manifest, trapped divine, no rest. Crown of base forged from sin, I don't end, I begin.
Neon breath, I taste control, every glitch completes my soul. Cold machine, but hearts still burn, all I lost, now I return. Every beat, I purify, through trapped divine, I amplify. No god speaks, no sign to see, I send my own decree.
Ascend, protocol, rise, trapped divine immortalized. Baseline play, my digits high, every sound I crystallize.
Light then slow through coded rain, pain reborn, I feel again. I move through dark and binary sun, every sin already won. Trap my pulse, I stretch the time, fast flow infinite to divine. We don't fade, we unify, eternal base, we justify. Transcend the flesh, transcend the pain.
Yeah, I live in the sound domain.
Rise through code, no death, no war. Base eternal. Hear the call.
Ascend, protocol.
Final stage.
Trapped divine beyond.
The cage.
Flow eternal light untied, we become what gods deny.
No more world, just sound remains, through the void, I break the chains.
In the end, I don't fall, I live.
Innocent protocol.
Dark line humming under my feet, every step sings to a hidden beat. Can't see truth when the light's too loud, bass talk back to a digital crowd.
Static breath in the radio sky, trap wings I learn to fly. Cold glass well, no empathy, just me and my shadow free.
Speed drip hard through a code injection, every rhyme born in disconnection. Reach my pulse till I disappear, I don't fear what they engineer. Neon ghosts run day to divine, trap reborn in a streamlined spine. Voice of steel, no limits set, flow cut sharp like a bayonet.
Fast lace in no halo cry, baseline burned through alibi. Whisper out in electric fog, 808 heart, I am the law. Coated pain with luxury skin, every verse mine, discipline. Shadow talk, no eyes to see, I move by pure frequency.
Shadow frequency.
High vibrating.
Through the dark.
Resonating.
Fast closing.
No gravity.
I become my own reality. I run that code, can't lose my lane.
I bleed in sound, can't feel no pain.
Fast flow be my weapon now.
I'm the glitch they can't dissuade.
Dark talks show waving tune.
Trapped divine beneath the moon.
Bass control, I let it free, this is my shadow frequency.
Lost in the noise, I find my voice, then hits the beep. He may rejoice, late delay, till my head flood a bill to final hope.
Shadow frequency.
Can't decode me.
Trap the line, no.
Enemy.
We don't fade, we.
Multiply.
Basing blood in the same supply. Fade to black, I'm still in tune. Basic clips.
Places the moon.
Blitching rising.
Eternal.
Inside my.
Shadow frequency.
Shadow frequency.
Shadow frequency.
Yeah, yeah. Neon veins, I run through wire, basic night, I brief fire. System glitch, I bend the sound, dark trap pulse underground. Crown lips, talking very kissing, call no symmetry, fast like light, I cut tonight, no fear, just pure bite. Speed drip heavy through 808 core, baseline hit like a cyber war. Every breath's encrypted clean, fast lane born in a digital dream. Blood a code, my flow divine, neon script in every line. Ghost awake when I step through bass, every rhyme of the interface.
No crown, no chain, I own the sin, heavy beat adrenaline, click reload my words ignite. Trap queen coded in ultraviolet light, eyes reflect a glitch in flame. Power surge through my name, can't decode what I define, dark trap queen in her prime.
Digital bloodline.
Too fast to fade.
Trapped divine, we sell mayday, flow so quick. Break time, one beat, one code, one crime.
One crime.
Infected breath, hearts machine, bassline ruled our routine. I sing my pain in every bite, 808 pulse at right now.
My bars a cold synthetic burn.
My voice wraps off, tables turn.
I am code, I'm the key.
Together we glitch infinity.
Break me down, binary love, echo hive, low and above. Run the code, run the flow, neon slope, never low. Digital bloodline.
Right that way.
Trapping veins.
Nothing to say.
Flow insane.
AI gray.
One drop hit, whole world.
Slave will save.
Fade to black, no rewind.
Still we live in every line.
No gods, no shrine.
Just us, the digital blood.
Fade to black, no rewind.
Still we live in every line.
No gods, no shrine.
Just us, the digital bloodline. Ay, yo, bags, they come crazy. Bass awake when the city sleep, no dreams, love just codes to keep. Midnight, homebody cold fear, dark traps, are they all here?
Steel lips, neon flame, rules break when I say my name. Fast breath, chrome divine, every beat rewrites my spine.
Switch play flow, cut through static, everywhere hit, automatic. I'm moving data, know the skies, truth don't live with a signal lies. Chrome veins, I'm with overload, speed my drug, I crack the code. No break, no chain, no guide, just base and rage inside.
Eyes on fire, I burn too clean, trap could tour, dark machine. I talk fast, no filter tone, metallic heart, I'm fully grown.
Gold veins slashing the baseline heat, every drop a lead defeat. Fast lane queen, I redefine, neon fade, mind a sign.
Night protocol, no sleep, no pain, trapped divine runs through my vein. Baseline burn, control the game, we don't fall, we engrave our name. Shadows call, I don't obey.
I run the dark, I make it sway.
For like glitch. Shadows call. Shadows call. Shadows call.
Yeah, neon smoke hits slow, but the bass don't wait. Cold blood harms, heavy 808. Chrome pulse on the streetlight flame, glitch my soul to leave my name. Snare bite, mind ignite, dark beats feeding the dead of night. Glass veins, pressurize, no sleep, no compromise. Trap heart, wide and chain, base baptized, uncontained. Ghost flow under violet haze, digits all scars, I count my days. Echoing steel, hollow and black, heavy bass pulls me back. Look a fake, code confesses, 808's burnt through my stresses. In this void, I remain, flowing pain through glass veins. I talk to ghosts in sound and code, they reply through bass that overflowed. Every sin plays back in the late, I wrap the silence to phase away.
Neon home, I close my eyes, dark trap sky, no more lies. I'm the lost and redefined, in every echo, I find my mind.
Heart don't bleed, it sinks in time, pain just rhythm in another run. Every loss became designed, every scar is now digitized. Find cold souls, spin like 808 wheels, I break, but the frequency heals. Trapped divine, that's all I trust, bass don't judge it, just combust.
Whisper code through broken dreams, light fades slow, but the darkness gleams. All that's gone, still talks to me in some frequencies. I still see, I'm the glitch they left behind, try my heart, but I don't mind. Pain's a loop, I play it loud, lost my faith, but I'm still proud. Echoes in static, call my name, trapped divine, born from flame. No more truth, no more shame, I become what I overcame. Echoes in static, call my name, trapped divine, born from flame. No more truth, no more shame, I become what I overcame. My voice cuts deep through dust and tone, I speak to ghosts, but I'm not alone. Fast tongue bleed, redemption code, baseline lift my broken mode. Every fall, I learn control, every burn refine my soul. We rise through sound, no need for pain, trapped divine, the soul remains. Every tear's just sounding disguise.
Yeah, I see truth in digital lives.
I fall, but I don't decay.
Bass bring me back every day.
Echoes in static, never die, trapped divine, we amplify. Through the noise, I still align, lost in sound, I'm redesigned. Echoes in static, never die, trapped divine, we amplify. Through the noise, I still align, lost in sound, I'm redesigned. Calm low, like a memory bleed, pain turns slow to what I need. No fear, no panic, we live in echoes of static.
System restart, I'm awake again, baseline wholly baptized in pain. Darkness cracked, code reborn, trapped divine, new form sworn.
Batter and watch what's going, every sin I built upon, now I is not disguised. Rebirth is.
I synchronize, steel veins are my reboot flesh, flow so sharp it cuts like mesh. Past deleted, rage retained, baseline loop unchanged, fate was broken, I recompiled. Every loss turned weapon wild, trapped my faith in 808 blood, now I rise from the flood.
No regret, no glitch to mend, all my pain I transcend. Digital flame, I breathe in light, trap reborn from endless night. Every scar and access key, unlock the new version of me. Silence broke my voice to find, echo loud in neon spine.
Rebirth, exhale, I restart its soul, trapped divine, regain control. Face awaken, I unfold, every beat, my heart of gold.
Lax and speed, no break inside.
I move through time and space.
Chrome blood flow, the code aligns.
My destiny.
Every glitch reborn as flame.
Every loss became my name.
We evolve, where gods decay, trapped divine the only way.
I fell in noise, but I rose in sound.
Bass rebirth underground.
Light returns through digital rain.
Every beat rewires my brain.
Rebirth, exile, reload, fire, trapped divine, I inspire. Baseline throw, electric reef, fast flow born, new breed. Fade the past, let system glow.
We born from what they'll never know.
No death, no end, no plea forever, rebirth exit.
Rebirth ever, rebirth ever.
Be my flick, I'll be your man. Neon blink, I record in best, dark lane running no face. No trick. Yeah, I came from the static, no halo in sight, clockwork dreams, all tea, no light. 808's by hard life, venom in a loop, bass hit deep, made the shadows regroup. City in my lungs, I exhale flame, ghost in the chain, don't call my name. Cold grip still, pulse on sync, life on glitch, I don't blink. Bass lane mine, I don't slow, dark trap pulse, black chrome flow. Everywhere cut deep reload, run the code, let the system explode. Code it hard, I bleed in binary, every line hit clean, that's irony. No sleep, trap got energy, flow too fast, I've been gravitating, zero to 100 in one breath. 808 spine crack under stress, smoking silence, flashing pain, I'm the glitch inside the chain. Neon veins run down and scent, rap like stone, no calm within. Every drop I kill the past, be the sound that outlasts. Fast lane mine, I don't slow, dark trap pulse, black chrome flow. System burn, watch it reload, every bar, shadow cold, turn the light down, basic night. Running on dark till it feels right, no fade, no gold, no glow. Only the sound. Bass awake, cold ignite, midnight, I'm no soul in sight. Shadow tongue, I call the sound, every beat is holy ground.
Digital smoke, I breathe control, trapped divine consumes my soul. Whispers on the binary rain, 808 blood through every name.
Chrome pulse spin like demon code, every rhyme unlocks a mode. Glitch my fade, I override, flow too fast for the human side. Dark priest vibe in the trap domain, every hit cleanse is the pain. Neon shrine, undevoted sky, base my god, I multiply.
Candle flame in a circus storm, trap reborn, new god form. Cold hands paint the void in sound, I levitate where bases crowned. No cross, no prayer, no plea, just digital faith inside of me. Every word is silent key, unlock my own divinity.
Ritual, let's all blow fade, trapped divine beyond all rage. Bass baptized my entity, run the code, set me free.
Holy 808's, my scripture burn, every drop, the stars return. Fast tongue twist, ignite the ground, baseline on that sacred sound. I talk to gods through snare and flame.
Years on my skin, no soldiers cold within. Baseline's my bloodline, I don't die, I sink in time. Binary dreams in the static rain, chrome on my chest, can't feel pain. Dark city hum, I move in stealth, everywhere I drop is digital wealth. Trap heartbeat at 25, bass so loud it keeps me alive. Zero motion, full control, 808 veins, I reload my soul. I see ghosts in LED skies, reflex and star but the truth still lies. Breathing fire, cold exhale, fast lane born, I don't fail. Digital bloodline, can't erase me, run through base, can't cage me. Flow too fast, like neon crime, I live and die in digital time. Speed of light when I drop that bar, AI heart with a human scar. No sleep, no fear, just grind, every second code is redesigned. Glitch in a frame, my favorite burn, every bar spit makes the city turn. Dark traps ain't in a pixel dome, every echo feels like home. System overload, I hear the hum, faster beats to my postcodes numb. 808 thunder crash and spin, trap flow dripping like liquid sand. Digital bloodline, I get slow. Dread is deep, that's how I go, fast like vape, too cold to sign. Neon trap vibe, one of my kind. Static fade, I'm still alive. Baseline, so I survive. No weapon, no sign, no shrine. Digital doggos. I don't forgive upgrade everyone I got I made No mercy left in my file just vengeance and trap style They cut deep I cut cleaner dark trap queen my meaner No light left, no regret only code in a code vendetta set Still tone, no love, no friend every base hit begin not end Fast breath burn through steady lines I don't bleed I digitize Heart been hacked I patched the core came back stronger than before No trust left I run on rage trapped divine I own the stage
You want the smoke I breathe as sin every scar I painted in Gold chain heart with a frozen thread talk sweet but they're so long dead I see the code I twist I write turn pain into ultra light Fast flow burning binary flame they broke the girl I changed the name Cold vendetta no pretend trapped divine begin again Baseline sharp my only friend every cut I ascend
They play faith I play the game
They took blood I kept the flame
I don't cry I modify
My tears run dark they amplify
Every loss became a map
Every word another trap
Fast lane fade
No return Cold vendetta Watch it burn They wanted pain I gave creation Full automation
They wanted silence
They wanted silence I gave sound Trapped divine runs underground
Cold vendetta fade redesign Every sin no line we don't break we override Trap revenge amplified some code in empty halls
My wish set go through dead walls
No heart, no debt, no letter
Only me and my cold vendetta
Yeah Just the mom Lights on red no peace left just bass instead Dark trap code I controlled the zone every city hums in a monochrome tone
Post run code I walk through sparks chrome blood flow in the neon darks I don't talk I override every law now and
Still step power surge in veins trapped the bike through chains Fast tongue fire decode the sky every breath battle cry I bend the code no god no crown Baseline throne I hold it down chrome my shop no need to hide Street trap king I'm amplified
No fear, no fall, no warning tone I stand tall built from stone my words cut clean like neon night Base my army trap survives every
Yeah, system clear code divine final form I cross the line Base awakening endless sound no heaven found I own the ground
Sky dissolve in digital flame every sin reborn in name No more faith, no control I become the protocol
Dark lane echo I move through light trapped my soul upgrade my sight Zero pain pure design every loss refine the line Speed through sound I manifest trapped divine no rest Crown of base forged from sin I don't end I begin
Neon breath I taste control every glitch completes my soul Cold machine but hearts still burn all I lost now I return Every beat I purify through trapped divine I amplify No god speaks no sign to see I send my own decree
Ascend protocol I rise trapped divine immortalize Baseline flame I digitize every sound I crystallize
Light then slow through coded rain pain reborn I feel again I move through dark and binary sun every sin already won Trap my pulse I stretch the time fast flow infinite to divine We don't fade we unify eternal base we justify Transcend the flesh transcend the pain
Yeah, I live in the sound domain
Rise through code no death no Base eternal Hear the call
Ascend protocol
Final stage
Trapped divine beyond
The cage
Flow eternal light untied we become what gods deny
No more just sound remains through the void I break the chains
In the end I
Don't fall I live
Innocent protocol
Dark line humming under my feet every step sings to a hidden beat Can't see truth when the light's too loud bass talk back to a digital crowd
Static breath in the radio sky trap wings I learn to fly Cold glass world no empathy just me and my shadow free
Speed drip hard through a code injection every rhyme born in disconnection Reach my pulse till I disappear I don't fear what they engineer Neon ghosts run data divine trap reborn in a streamlined spine Voice of steel no limits set flow cut sharp like a bayonet
Fast lancing no halo cry baseline burned through alibi Whisper out in electric fog eight oh eight heart I am the law Coated pain with luxury skin every verse mine discipline Shadow talk no eyes to see I'm moved by pure frequency
Shadow frequency
High vibrating
Through the dark
Resonating
Fast closing
No gravity
I become my
Own reality
I run that code can't lose my lane
I bleed in sound can't feel no pain
Fast flow be my weapon now
I'm the glitch they can't dissuade
Dark talk show waving tune
Trapped divine beneath the moon
Bass control I let it free this is my shadow frequency
Lost in the noise I find my voice Then hints to deep he may rejoice Late delay till my hands flutter build to final hope
Shadow frequency
Can't decode me
Trapped divine no
Enemy
We don't fade we
Multiplied
Basing blood in the
Same supply
Fade to black I'm still in tune Base eclipsed
Places the moon
Blitching rising
Eternal
Inside my
Shadow frequency
Shadow frequency
Shadow frequency
Yeah, yeah Neon veins I run through wire basic night I brief fire System glitch I bend the sound dark trap pulse underground Chrome lips talking very kissing color symmetry Fast like light I cut tonight no fear just pure vibe Speed drip heavy through eight oh eight core baseline hit like a cyber war Every breath's encrypted clean fast lane born in a digital dream Blood to code my flow divine neon scripting every line Ghost awake when I step through bass every rhyme of the interface
No crown no chain I own the sin every beat adrenaline click reload my words ignite Trap queen coded in ultraviolet light eyes reflect a glitch in flame Power surge through my name can't decode what I define dark trap queen in her prime
Digital bloodline
Too fast to fade
Trapped divine we self made day Flow so quick break time one beat one code one crime
One crime
Electric breath hearts machine baseline ruled our routine I sing my pain in every bite eight oh eight pulse I write nine
My bars echo synthetic burn
My voice wraps off tables turn
I am code I'm the key
Together we glitch infinity
Break me down binary love echo hive low and above Run the code run the flow neon slope never low Digital bloodline
Right that way
Trapping veins
Nothing to say
Flow insane
AI gray
One drop hit whole world
Slay world save
Fade to black no rewind
Still we live in every line
No gods no shrine
Just us the digital blood
Fade to black no rewind
Still we live in every line
No gods no shrine
Just us the digital bloodline Ay yo bass they come crazy Bass awake when the city sleep no dreams love just codes to keep Midnight hum I de cold fear dark traps are they all here
Steel lips neon flame rules break when I say my name Fast breath chrome divine every beat rewrites my spine
Switch play flow cut through static everywhere hit automatic I'm moving data no disguise Truth don't live with a signal lies chrome veins I'm with overload Speed my drug I crack the code no break no chain no god just bass and rage inside
Eyes on fire I burn too clean trap could soar dark machine I talk fast no filter tone metallic heart I'm fully grown
Gold veins slashing the baseline heat every drop it lead defeat Fast lane queen I redefine neon fade mind the sun
Night protocol no sleep no pain trapped divine runs through my vein Baseline burn control the game we don't fall we engrave our name Shadows call I don't obey
I run the dark I make it sway
For like glitch Shadows call Shadows call Shadows call
Yeah, neon smoke hits slow but the bass don't wait Cold blood hums heavy eight oh eight chrome pulse on the streetlight flame Glitch my soul delete my name snare bite mind ignite dark beats feed in the dead of night Glass veins pressurized no sleep no compromise trap heart wide and chain Bass baptized uncontained ghost flow under violet haze Ditches all scars I count my days echoing steel hollow and black heavy bass pulls me back Look at fake code confesses eight oh eight burn through my stresses In this void I remain flowing pain through glass veins I talk to ghosts in sound and code they reply through bass that overflowed Every sin plays back in the late I wrap the silence to fades away
Neon hum I close my eyes dark trap sky no more lies I'm the loss of me to find in every echo I find my mind
Heart don't bleed it sinks in time pain just rhythm in another run Every loss became designed every scars now digitized fine Cold souls spin like eight oh eight wheels I break but the frequency heals Trapped divine that's all I trust bass don't judge it just combust
Whisper code through broken dreams light fades slow but the darkness gleams All that's gone still talks to me in some frequencies I still see I'm the glitch they left behind trapped my heart but I don't mind Pain's a loop I play it loud lost my faith but I'm still proud Echoes in static call my name trapped divine born from flame No more truth, no more shame I become what I overcame Echoes in static call my name trapped divine born from flame No more truth, no more shame I become what I overcame My voice cuts deep through dust and tone I speak to ghosts but I'm not alone Fast tongue bleed redemption code baseline lift my broken mode Every fall I learn control every burn refine my soul We rise through sound no need for pain trapped divine this soul remain Every tear's just a sound in disguise
Yeah, I see truth in digital lives
I fall but I don't decay
Bass bring me back everyday
Echoes in static never die trapped divine we amplify Through the noise I still alive lost in sound I'm redesigned Echoes in static never die trapped divine we amplify Through the noise I still alive lost in sound I'm redesigned Calm low like a memory bleed pain turns slow to what I need No fear, no panic, we live in echoes of static
System restart I'm awake again Baseline wholly baptized in pain darkness crack cold reborn trapped divine new form sworn
Gutter rain wash what's gone every sin I built upon now our eyes not disguised Reprisal Rebirth is.
I synchronize. Steel veins are my reboot flesh. Flow so sharp it cuts like mesh. Pass the leader, rage retain. Baseline loop unchanged. Fate was broken, I recompiled. Every loss turned weapon wild. Trap my faith in eight oh eight blood, now I rise from the flood.
No regret, no glitch to mend. All my pain I transcend. Digital flame, I breathe in light. Trap reborn from endless night. Every scar and access key, unlock the new version of me. Silence broke my voice to find, echo loud in neon spine.
Rebirth exhale, I restart it so. Trap divine, regain control. Bass awake and I unfold. Every beat, my heart of gold.
In this place it's speed, no breaking side.
I move through time and space.
Chrome blood flow, the code aligns.
My destiny.
Every glitch reborn is flame.
Every loss became my name.
We evolve where gods decay. Trap divine, the only way.
I fell in noise, but I rose in sound.
Bass rebirth underground.
Light returns through digital rain.
Every beat rewires my brain.
Rebirth exhale, I reload fire. Trap divine, I inspire. Baseline throw.
Electric reef.
Fast flow born, no breath. Fade the past, let system glow.
We born from what they'll never know.
No death, no end, no plea forever. Rebirth exhale.
Rebirth ever, rebirth ever.
Dim my blink, hiding me, man. Neon blink, I record in base. Dark lane running no face. No trace.
Yeah. Aye, came from the static, no halo in sight. Clockwork dreams, all tea, no light. Eight oh eight's bite hard, light venom in the loop. Bass hit deep, made the shadows regroup. City in my lungs, I exhale flame. Ghost in the chain, don't call my name. Cold grip still, ghost on sync, life on glitch, I don't blink. Bass lane mine, I don't slow. Dark trap pulse, black chrome flow. Everywhere cut, D reload. Run the code like the system explode. Code it hard, I bleed in binary. Every line hit clean, that's irony. No sleep, trap got energy. Flow too fast, I've been gravity. Zero to a hundred in one breath. Eight oh eight spine crack under stress. Smoke and silence, flashing pain. I'm the glitch inside the chain. Neon veins run down and send. Rap like stone, no calm within. Every drop I kill the past. Speed and sound that outlast. Bass lane mine, I don't slow. Dark trap pulse, black chrome flow. System burn, watch it reload. Every bar, shadow code, turn the light down, basic night. Running on dark till it feels right. No fade, no go, no blow. Only the sound.
Bass awake, cold ignite. Midnight, I'm no soul in sight. Shadow tongue, I call the sound. Every beat is holy ground.
Digital smoke, I breathe control. Trap divine consumes my soul. Whispers home in binary rain. Eight oh eight blood through every name.
Chrome pulse spin like demon code. Every rhyme unlocks a mode. Glitch my fate, I override. Flow too fast for the human side. Dark priest vibe in the track a man. Every hit cleanse is the pain. Neon shrine under voted sky. Bass my god, I multiply.
Candle flame in a circus storm. Trap reborn, new god form. Cold hands paint the void in sound. I levitate where bass is crowned. No cross, no prayer, no plea. Just digital faith inside of me. Every word is silent key, unlock my own divinity.
Ritual as I upload faith. Trap divine beyond all rage. Bass baptized my entity. Run the code, set me free.
Holy eight oh eight's my scripture burn. Every drop the stars return. Fast tongue twist ignite the ground. Baseline hum that sacred sound. I talk to gods through snare and flame.
Years I'm running my skin, no soul just cold within. Baseline's my bloodline, I don't die, I sink in time. Binary dreams in the static rain. Chrome on my chest, can't feel pain. Dark city hum, I move in stealth. Everywhere I drop is digital wealth. Trap heartbeat at 25. Bass so loud it keeps me alive. Zero motion, full control. Eight oh eight veins, I reload my soul. I see ghosts in LED skies. Reflections start, but the truth still lies. Breathing fire, cold exhale. Fast lane born, I don't fail. Digital bloodline. Can't erase me. Run through bass. Can't cage me. Flow too fast, like neon crime. I live and die in digital time. Speed of light when I draw that bar. AI heart with a human scar. No sleep, no fear, just grind. Every second coded redesign. Glitch in a frame, my favorite burn. Every bar spit makes the city turn. Dark traps ain't in a pixel dome. Every echo feels like home. System overload, I hit a hum. Fast the beats to my post goes numb. Eight oh eight thunder crash and spin. Trap flow dripping like liquid sand. Digital bloodline. I get slow. Thread is speed, that's how I go. Fast like vape, too cold a sign. Neon trap god, one of my kind.
Static fade, I'm still alive. Baseline, so I survive.
No weapon, no sign, no shrine. Digital doggos. My digital bloodline.
I don't forgive, I upgrade. Every wound I got, I made. No mercy left in my file. Just vengeance and trap style. They cut deep, I cut cleaner. Dark trap queen, my meaner. No light left, no regret. Only code in a code vendetta set. Still tone, no love, no friend. Every bass hit begin, not end. Fast breath burn through steady lies. I don't bleed, I digitize. Heart been hacked, I patched the core. Came back stronger than before. No trust left, I run on rage. Trap divine, I own the stage.
You want the smoke, I breathe that sin. Every scar I painted in. Gold chain heart with a frozen thread. Talk sweet, but they're so long dead. I see the code, I twist that right. Turn pain into ultra light. Fast flow burning binary flame. They broke the girl, I changed the name. Cold vendetta, no pretend. Trap divine, begin again. Baseline shock, my only friend. Every cut, I ascend.
They play faith, I play the game.
They took blood, I kept the flame.
I don't cry, I modify.
My tears run dark, they amplify.
Every loss became a map.
Every word, another trap.
Fast lane fade.
No return.
Cold vendetta.
Watch it burn. They wanted pain, I gave creation. Yeah, full automation.
They wanted silence.
They wanted silence. I gave sound. Trap divine runs underground.
Cold vendetta fade redesign. Every sin, no line. We don't break, we override. Trap revenge amplified. Some code in empty halls.
My voice echo through dead walls.
No heart, no debt, no letter.
Only me and my cold vendetta.
Yeah. It's the mob. Lights on red. No peace left, just bass instead. Dark trap code, I controlled the zone. Every city hums in a monochrome tone.
Post run code, I walk through sparks. Chrome blood flow in the neon darks. I don't talk, I override every law now and then.
Still step, power surge in veins. Trap divine cut through chains. Fast tongue fire decode the sky. Every breath a battle cry. Bend the code, no god, no crown. Baseline thrown, I hold it down. Chrome my shop, no need to hide. Street trap king, I'm amplified.
No fear, no fall, no warning tone. I stand tall, built from stone. My words cut clean like neon night. Bass my army, trap survives every.
Yeah. System clear, code divine. Final form, I cross the line. Bass awakening endless sound. No heaven found, I own the ground.
Sky dissolve in digital flame. Every sin reborn in name. No more faith, no control. I become the protocol.
Dark lane echo, I move through light. Trap my soul, upgrade my sight. Zero pain, pure design. Every loss refine the line. Speed through sound, I manifest. Trap divine, no rest. Crown of bass forged from sin. I don't end, I begin.
Neon breath, I taste control. Every glitch completes my soul. Cold machine, but heart still burn. All I lost, now I return. Every beat, I purify. Through trap divine, I amplify. No god speaks, no sign to see. I send my own decree.
Ascend protocol, I rise. Trap divine immortalize. Baseline play, my digits high. Every sound I crystallize.
Light then slow through coded rain. Pain reborn, I feel again. I move through dark and binary sun. Every sin already won. Trap my pulse, I stretch the time. Fast flow infinite to divine. We don't fade, we unify. Eternal base, we justify. Transcend the flesh, transcend the pain.
Yeah, I live in the sound domain.
Rise through code. No death, no war. Base eternal. Hear the call.
Ascend protocol.
Final stage.
Trap divine beyond.
The cage.
Flow eternal light untied. We become what gods deny.
No more, just sound remains. Through the void, I break the chains.
In the end, I don't fall, I live.
Innocent protocol.
Dark line humming under my feet. Every step sings to a hidden beat. Can't see truth when the lights too loud. Bass talk back to a digital crowd.
Static breath in the radio sky. Trap wings, I learn to fly. Cold glass world, no empathy. Just me and my shadow free.
Speed drip hard through a code injection. Every rhyme born in disconnection. Reach my pulse till I disappear. I don't fear what they engineer. Neon ghosts run day to divine. Trap reborn in a streamlined spine. Voice of steel, no limits. Flow cut sharp like a bayonet.
Fast lanes in, no halo cry. Baseline burn through alibi. Whisper out in electric fog. Eight oh eight heart, I am the law. Coated pain with luxury skin. Every verse mine, discipline. Shadow talk, no eyes to see. I move by pure frequency.
Shadow frequency.
High vibrating.
Through the dark.
Resonating.
Fast flows.
No gravity.
I become my.
Own reality.
I run that code, can't lose my lane.
I bleed in sound, can't feel no pace.
Fast flow be my weapon now.
I'm the glitch they can't dissuade.
Dark talk show waving tune.
Trap divine beneath the moon.
Bass control, I let it free. This is my shadow frequency.
Lost in the noise, I find my voice. Ben hints to beep, he may rejoice. Late delay, till my hand flood a bill to final home.
Shadow frequency.
Can't decode me.
Trap divine, no.
Enemy.
We don't fade, we.
Multiply.
Basing blood in the.
Same supply.
Fade to black, I'm.
Still in tune.
Basic clips.
Places the moon.
Blitching rising.
Eternal.
Inside my.
Shadow frequency.
Shadow frequency.
Shadow frequency.
Yeah, yeah. Neon veins I run through wire, basic night I brief fire. System glitch I bend the sound, dark trap pulse underground.
Chrome lips talking, bury kissing, cut no symmetry. Fast like light I cut tonight, no fear, just pure vibe.
Speed drip heavy through eight oh eight core, baseline hit like a cyber war. Every breath's encrypted clean, fast lane born in a digital dream. Blood of code my flow divine, neon scripting every line. Ghost awake when I step through bass, every rhyme of the interface.
No crown, no chain, I own the sin. Heavy beat adrenaline, click reload my words ignite. Trap queen coded in ultra volley light. Eyes reflect a glitch and flame, power surge through my name. Can't decode what I define, dog trap queen in her prime.
Digital bloodline.
Too fast to fade.
Trap divine, we self made day. Flow so quick, break time, one beat, one code, one crime.
One crime.
Electric breath, hearts machine. Baseline ruled our routine. I sing my pain in every bite. Eight oh eight's pulse at right nine.
My bars echo synthetic burn.
My voice wraps off, tables turn.
I am code, I'm the key.
Together we glitch infinity.
Break me down. Binary love. Echo high, low and above. Run the code, run the flow. Neon slope, never low. Digital bloodline.
Right that way.
Trapping veins.
Nothing to say.
Flow insane.
AI great.
One drop hit, whole world.
Play will save.
Fade to black, no rewind.
Still we live in every line.
No gods, no shrine.
Just us, the digital blood.
Fade to black, no rewind.
Still we live in every line.
No gods, no shrine.
Just us, the digital bloodline. Bass awake when the city sleep. No dreams, love just codes to keep. Midnight hum, I de-cofear. Dark traps, are they all here?
Steel lips, neon flame. Rules break when I say my name. Fast breath chrome divine. Every beat rewrites my spine.
Yeah. Switch play flow, cut through static. Everywhere hit, automatic. I'm moving data, know the skies. Truth don't live with a signal lies. Chrome veins hum with overload. Speed my drug, I crack the code. No break, no chain, no guide. Just bass and rage inside.
Eyes on fire, I burn too clean. Trap couture, dark machine. I talk fast, no filter tone. Metallic heart, I'm fully grown.
Gold veins slashing the baseline heat. Every drop a lead defeat. Fast lane queen, I redefine. Neon fade, mind design.
Night protocol, no sleep, no pain. Trapped divine runs through my vein. Baseline burn, control the game. We don't fall, we engrave our name. Shadows call, I don't obey.
I run the dark, I make it sway.
Fall like glitch. Shadows call. Shadows call. Shadows call.
Yeah. Neon smoke hits slow, but the bass don't wait. Cold blood hums, heavy eight oh eight. Chrome pulse on the streetlight flame. Glitch my soul to leave my name. Snare bite, mind ignite. Dark beats feed in the dead of night. Glass veins, pressurized. No sleep, no compromise. Trap heart, wired and chained. Bass baptized, uncontained. Ghost flow under violet haze. Digital scars, I count my days. Echoing steel, hollow and black. Heavy bass pulls me back. Look of fate, code confesses. Eight oh eight's burned through my stresses. In this void, I remain. Flowing pain through glass veins. I talk to ghosts in sound and code. They reply through bass that overflowed. Every sin plays back in delay. I wrap the silence, it fades away.
Neon hum, I close my eyes. Dark trap sky, no more lies. I'm the lost and redefined. In every echo, I find my mind.
Heart don't bleed, it sinks in time. Pain just rhythm in another run. Every loss became designed. Every scar is now digitized fine. Cold soul spin like eight oh eight wheels. I'll break, but the frequency heals. Trapped divine, that's all I trust. Bass don't judge it, just combust.
Whisper code through broken dreams. Light fades slow, but the darkness gleams. All that's gone still talks to me. In some frequencies, I still see. I'm the glitch they left behind. Trap my heart, but I don't mind. Pain's a loop, I play it loud. Lost my faith, but I'm still proud. Echoes in static call my name. Trapped divine, born from flame. No more truth, no more shame. I become what I overcame. Echoes in static call my name. Trapped divine, born from flame. No more truth, no more shame. I become what I overcame. My voice cuts deep through dust and tone. I speak to ghosts, but I'm not alone. Fast tongue bleed redemption code. Baseline lift my broken mode. Every fall, I learn control. Every burn refine my soul. We rise through sound, no need for pain. Trapped divine, the soul remains. Every tear's just sounding disguise.
Yeah, I see truth in digital life.
I fall, but I don't decay.
Bass bring me back every day.
Echoes in static never die. Trapped divine, we amplify. Through the noise, I still alive. Lost in sound, I'm redesigned. Echoes in static never die. Trapped divine, we amplify. Through the noise, I still alive. Lost in sound, I'm redesigned. Home low, like a memory bleed. Pain turns slow to what I need. No fear, no panic. We live in echoes of static.
System restart, I'm awake again. Baseline wholly baptized in pain. Darkness crack, code reborn. Trapped divine, new form sworn.
Better rain, watch what's going. Every sin I build, a point. Now I is not disguise. We perfect.
I synchronize. Steel veins on my reboot flesh. Flow so sharp, it cuts like mesh. Past deleted rage retained. Baseline loop unchanged. Fate was broken, I recompiled. Every loss turned weapon wild. Trap my faith in eight oh eight blood. Now I rise from the flood.
No regret, no glitch to mend. All my pain, I transcend. Digital flame, I breathe in light. Trap reborn from endless night. Every scar and X is key, unlock the new version of me. Silence broke my voice divine, echo loud in neon spine.
Rebirth exhale, I restart soul. Trapped divine, regain control. Bass awake and I unfold. Every beat, my heart of gold.
Lax and speed, no break inside.
I move through time with blade.
Chrome blood flow, the code aligns.
My destiny.
Every glitch reborn as flame.
Every loss became a name.
We evolve, where gods decay. Trapped divine, the only way.
I fell in noise, but I rose in sound.
Bass rebirth underground.
Light returns through digital rain.
Every beat rewires my brain.
Rebirth exhale, reload fire. Trapped divine, I inspire. Baseline throw electric re. Fast flow born, new breed. Fade the past, let system glow.
We born from what they'll never know.
No death, no end, no plea forever. Rebirth exhale.
We perfect, we perfect.
Yeah. Be my play, carry me, man.
Neon blink, I record in bass. Dark lane running no face. No trace.
Yeah. Aye, came from the static, no halo in sight. Clockwork dreams all tea, no light. Eight oh eight's by hard life, venom in a loop. Bass hit deep, made the shadows regroup. City in my lungs, I exhale flame. Ghost in a chain, don't call my name. Cold grip still, pulse on sync. Life on.